Well, this is a new one.
Okay, now, how does she get it?
Okay, I'm ready. And you do, okay, I'm ready.
Yeah, but does it record on there?
Oh, we're there, camera?
No, we have to actually tell it to record.
Do you have to hit okay, I'm ready first?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Here's the record button.
Okay, there you go.
Start your.
This progress will now be recorded.
Recording in progress.
Okay.
At seven oh one, we want to call to Armita Township Planning Commission meeting to order.
Please rise.
Oh, we have to rise for the pledge, yes.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll, roll call, Chris.
Okay, Abercrombie here, Arnold.
Here.
Finn.
Here.
Jabara.
Present.
Karrig is not yet. Uh, Kuchy?
Here.
Marie?
Here.
Okay, we're all set.
Okay, and DJ is not here. As you said, Karrig's not present. Um, there is no one from the public present.
Um, approve and amend the agenda.
Approve and amend the agenda.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda or any amendments? Were there some notes from DJ?
Not that I know of. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion approv- agenda approved?
Uh.
Or we have to take a?
We have to vote.
Just vote?
Aye or?
All ayes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Any opposed? No, seeing no, hearing none.
Motion passed.
Motion passed.
And then the approval of the minutes from January third.
Approval of, January third minutes? Any changes or amendments to these minutes? It was noted, no?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January third as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor of approving the minutes as is?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, any?
Any opposed?
Hearing none. The agenda is approved.
Now, we're supposed to.
Public comments.
There, we'll want to let, um, public sit down. She just came in, hello?
Are there any public comments on the agenda?
Are there any public comments at the first? All right, none?
No public hearing.
There's no public hearing. Now, we're gonna go over reports in correspondence. The project status report from January, we all received that, did the members all review that?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Do we have that update on Boo Boo's or not?
Uh, not, not in, in, in the report, so, uh, DJ normally reads.
You know, I can read it, yeah.
That later, okay.
Just the last updates.
Chris, what did you say?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I, I was just saying that DJ normally reads.
We're gonna read the updates.
Oh, yeah.
To the record, the last updates.
Okay.
Do you need it?
Yes.
Okay, just ignore my notes.
Okay. So, project status report for January twenty twenty four. Community project, the lakes traffic study. The last updated December twenty two. The traffic study was reviewed in April meet, twenty two meeting and.
At the top, at the top, the top.
Oh, at ten twenty three, there's no update, thank you.
Correct.
Larry's parking lot, no update. Trillium Farm Wedding Barn, no update. Boo Boo's barnyard? On January twenty fourth, court found in favor of the township and the letter was sent to the property owner.
And there is an update on that, um, since that, uh, ruling, the bone, Boo Boo's boneyard has applied to the, um, appeal, Circuit Court of Appeals.
They filed an appeal.
So they are appealing the appeal. Um, and during the appeal, they will be allowed to continue to, um.
Operate.
Operate.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll continue with the projects. Um, Hidden River Estates, on January twenty fourth, the developer working, was working to obtain a performance bond, so that's the update for twenty twenty four. Latham Development, no update. De Hunt Storage, no update. And then the commission projects. Zoning ordinance amendments, uh, second home on property and seasonal worker clauses have no update. The ordinance book audit. On January twenty fourth, update is receive the document showing proposed outline of the new zoning ordinance book layout. The master plan update, on January twenty fourth, updates were requested and per, pictures were provided to the planner. We're gonna go over those. Sounds good.
So there was also, um, provided in your packets, um, a letter from, uh, a property owner that was sent to the attention of the planning commission. So I provided the letter and the response in your packets. Um, it was asking, um, about a pro- a property that the hu- the property owner owns that is showing on our zoning map as industrial. Um, and she was questioning because it's, it's bottom land, it's not developable. And she said it should be A.G., but because of its location, when the township aligned their industrial district, it fell into that industrial district. And I explained to her in the letter, and I also talked to her on the phone, that it does nothing to her property values. It's a benefit because if she decides to sell it, it wouldn't have to be rezoned, it's landlocked, so it cannot be sold, um, except to one of the properties around it. So that's what's provided here.
Should I read the letter for the record? The address?
Um, Kathleen English, or Irish, Irish, sorry.
Irish, almost English.
Isn't it Irish?
Yeah, Irish.
Kathleen Irish. And her address, do you want me to read the address for the record?
No.
No? Okay.
Yeah, please.
The, the public requested that we read the address?
Seven zero four one one, Romeo Plank.
Okay, Joe.
So is that con- that's technically non-conforming, that's actually addressed to you.
Can you repeat that?
It would be non, it would be non-conforming or conforming because it's going with the parcel?
I don't, I would need a quick summary of the.
She doesn't have the.
So, yeah. It, it, the, the, the property is landlocked, it cannot be sold on its own.
Correct.
Right.
It, unless it is sold to.
To an adjacent parcel.
An adjacent property owner. So, it's, it's not conforming or non-conforming, it, it was done prior to our zoning ordinances being in place. It's been that way for ages.
Yes, they've owned that property forever, ever.
There's no frontage on any street of the, of the landlocked property, so.
Right.
So, we.
Yeah. I, I, yeah, I, I saw that.
She, she included with the letter, uh, two thousand twenty three draft of the future land use map. And that's where she was surprised to see her property as industrial.
Yeah. Yeah. It, it's not only on the future land use map, it's actually on the current, um, uh, existing land use and zoning map.
In terrible.
So.
It would be legal non-conforming as is.
It would be.
Legal non-conforming?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're correct.
Unless she sells it to an adjacent parcel. Then it would be conforming with the parcel.
Uh, it, it would remain that way until, um, it, it would have to be, um, combined with.
Parcel's combined.
Another parcel for it to become ne- conforming.
That's fair. Okay, guys, thank you.
Yeah.
Just so, or clear.
And that was.
She requested an amendment to the map to show their land.
Yeah.
She did.
Are we doing that?
When I talked to her.
No.
Um, I explained to her that there is no detriment to her.
Yeah.
To leave it industrial and it may be a benefit to her heirs if they decide to sell the property to one of the industrial.
Okay.
So, and she was good with that.
She was good with that.
The reason she was asking for it was, um, uh, estate planning.
Yeah, to know that's not a detriment, yeah.
She wanted it, uh, it in writing to include with her.
Oh, that makes sense.
Right.
So then.
This one's, uh, the, our area, but I just thought you might know, uh, should be in charge for taxes. One of you guys, do you know? Because since it's, it's unusual, they typically erase the tax base.
It's all one big parcel though.
It's a, it's one parcel within her whole property.
It's all a parcel.
She owns multiple parcels around it.
I thought she said.
Yes.
It's just a split parcel within her other adjacent properties.
It's not even split, it's not split.
Right.
Oh, it's not, it's okay.
It's all just.
Right.
That's why it was.
Right.
Okay. I beg your pardon, yes.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a parcel, yeah, exactly.
Where they, where the line for the industrial on Powell Road.
On McFadden, yeah.
So, and it was just an odd shaped block.
My mistake, yes.
Yeah.
And I don't have any other reports for correspondence.
Okay, hearing none.
Does anyone else?
Need a motion to file these reports and correspondence?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Second?
A second.
That's a joke.
Any? Vote, with the vote on that motion to file correspondence?
You just have to say all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye. Yeah, aye.
Opposed?
Opposed? Hearing none.
There you go.
Unfinished business, it's the next agenda item. So then we, we looked at our two thousand and three annual planning report.
And DJ did look through it and felt that it was, um, it, it had captured all of the changes that were requested. I don't know if anyone else had a chance to work through it.
It did.
I thought it looked good.
I thought it looked good.
I didn't see any ins and out.
Any questions or concerns on the two thousand and three annual planning report? No?
So a vote is needed to send it to the board. For their approval.
Vote on sending it to the board, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, do we need a motion?
Opposed?
We need a motion.
Sorry. I thought that was a motion, but that was a motion from Chris, so can we have a motion to vote, uh?
Some move.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We need a second.
We need a second.
Joe, which Joe made the motion?
Joe made the.
Joe Jabara, and I'll second then, and then we.
Thank you.
And then we all, um.
We'll get through it.
And then out, they were all ayes.
Yes, we voted twice, I think we got it.
Yeah.
All right. Any new business? If none? Planning Commission projects, so master plan discussion, we have some nice pictures to talk about.
So, so I, if you wanna grab the notes that I left for DJ. Um, there were a couple of things that were identified. That one, yeah.
All right. I have.
Um.
Go ahead.
So, there are three new maps that were provided to everyone today. As well as, there's a copy of the, um, old master plan page that showed where the manufactured homes would be. That was not included on the future land use map, um.
The water sewer was included.
The, the water and sewer was captured, um, on the updated maps. Um, there was, you, you have my notes that I gave to DJ, so.
You want me to read them or you want to read them?
Um.
Um.
Do they make sense to you? They would have made sense to DJ.
The McComb Marcher tra- trail. Um.
On the.
S.B. green open space, is that on the map too?
That is not on the, the updated.
On the map, but it does need to be.
Map, um, this is the existing land use map. Um. What is it?
The new, it is on the future land use map, the new fancy, future land use map.
Um, no, the existing land use map.
Existing land use map is where it should be.
This should be green. Okay?
Okay.
And I'll kind of go over the other ones, um, with Brigitte, so she knows. So, when we emailed Laura back, there was a note about, about De Hunt. Which is this parcel right here. This should be commercial.
Okay.
Um, that one's correct, that one's correct. These two parcels, KLM and the DPW should also be.
Commercial.
It, it's Village of Romeo, should also be commercial. And she did get everything else correct.
Okay.
But I guess I wasn't clear in the email, so, so that's what needs to.
So three more parcels.
Yeah, and if, if you need me to show that and hand you the map, I can do that.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Then we're gonna add the, um, area where the manufactured housing develops.
That would be on the future land use map?
Yeah, right. Where is that? The same place where it, it was on the old master plan, just carrying it over.
And we're gonna add that to the future land use map. The new future land use map.
Yeah. And then we can include the section on the mini library, if you'd like as well.
It, it's not a mini library, it's just the Armita Free Public Library.
I thought you meant those little.
Yeah.
Put those on the map, they don't need those little book changing things.
And, and it's a Carnegie library.
I, I know, when I sent that email out, um, it was a little bit wordy. Um, so, so, I think, in my opinion, um, you can cut down the verbiage quite a bit. I'm trying to find my copy of it here. I thought I had it in here. Um. And of course, I'm not finding it in my copy. Um, do you hea- do you have a copy of that email?
I thought I did, I must have read it on my phone. Did you give us our copy?
I thought I included a copy in everybody's packet.
You said it was in my packet, so I must have read it then.
An email that discussed the library?
Yeah, it's in there.
Yeah, it's here.
Okay, um, do you guys want to wordsmith the paragraph?
We're gonna add that to the, um.
Don't you have?
I'm, I'm not finding my copy, so.
Then I'll find it, I know I saw it.
Well, if we have their permission, sure, why, why not, copy right?
Here.
Yeah, so, um. As it stands right now, do you guys have your copy? It was towards the back, okay.
Yeah.
Right here.
All right, so, um, I would, yeah, let's just start wordsmithing it. I would have the address or it's.
I did.
Um, I would say instead of giving the address, it's just located within the Village of Armita.
Well, I did the address because that's how we had the, the, um, hall.
Oh, okay.
The first sentence of the hall gave the address.
That's true, okay.
Do you want me to read it? Or you want to make changes and read it?
Yeah, I, I was gonna ta- say just take out every, everything except, like, the last three sentences. The, leave the first sen- sentence and then the last three sentences. Um, take out all of the stuff about it being a Carnegie library and resource member and all of that and just say.
Well, I, I guess it's kind of a big thing that it is a Carnegie library, but I wouldn't, you don't need to summarize what the Carnegie library means.
Yeah. So.
Okay.
So for the period after.
You mean the.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Carnegie library, period, which means it was originally built with money donated by Scottish-American businessman philanthropist Andrew Carnegie.
So taking all that out.
I didn't.
Take all out, that out.
I didn't think people know that. Well, they can Google it.
They can Google it.
Or just Carnegie library.
That's what we did.
Yeah, leave it at Carnegie library, yeah.
It is a Carnegie library.
Okay.
Patrons of the library are not limited to more than twenty five thousand items available at the library. That is a wordy sentence.
I think we can.
Do we need that sentence?
No, I'm thinking we could cut all of that because most libraries.
Well, and I took all of this right out of their website, so.
Okay, cool.
Because, I mean, most, most all libraries now are not, I mean, they're all community libraries where you can, they work together. So if you go into this library and you're not finding what you want, they'll pull it from another local library and get it to you.
Oh, about the Melcat?
You know, so.
So basically, they're all linked.
Yep.
Why don't we just put something like that and get to the point?
So, uh, we could even put like the Mel, uh, Mel Library Card provides materials to the Armita Free Public Library or is accepted at the Armita Free.
So maybe take out that whole sentence about the patrons?
Yeah, just see that it's part of the.
Yeah, take that sentence out.
Take that.
We didn't go through a library, like, take that out. And the resource members of libraries of suburban library system.
And take that out.
Do we want, yeah, let's take that out.
And take out also in the next sentence.
Yes.
The library also belongs to Melcat, take that sentence out?
Just also.
No, just the word also.
Just the word also.
The word also? The library belongs to Melcat, Michigan Electronic Library and Lib- Michigan Library Card. We want to say that? Melcat and Michigan Library Card provide materials to Armita Free Public Library patrons from other libraries in the state. That participate in the programs.
I would take that out because I think if you are looking for some, if you go in there and they, they're, they're gonna tell you that.
Sarah, not to be a jerk, what's that?
They're gonna tell you that, if I'm looking for, I don't know, the Great Gatsby or something. And they don't have it, they'll say, I can get it for you.
Yeah.
But what do you want to say, you said you want to just take that out, what is that?
Take out the, um.
If you don't mind.
The description, Melcat and my library card provide.
All that, library stuff.
Yeah, provide various.
And just start with access to the internet, electronic books, magazines, and music?
Yeah, and I think that's important.
Music is?
Yeah.
Or you can say some, even if it's as simple as residents.
It should be R.
Residents would benefit from it.
R available inside and outside the library. In addition, these traditional library services, it offers many different events. From reading challenges, book clubs, Lego clubs, to, to genealogy society meetings, as well as virtual learning and tours and even virtual vacations, and then the website.
And that I think is, I mean, that, that's selling.
The YouTube thing.
That's selling Armita, so.
Yeah, I think that should stay in also.
Yeah, but are we gonna offer that? Or is that the site you pulled it from?
That, I pulled it from their site.
That we pulled it from their site, so, yeah.
Okay.
It's something, makes Armita sound, look good, I like it.
Yeah, I think it, I think it does.
Yeah, we can add that.
But Google it, and take everything out.
Yeah, everything was taken from Wikipedia.
Yeah, well, that was the whole page from the website.
I will make a copy and give this.
We're getting charged by the letter, no?
That works.
Uh, I don't know.
I don't think we're getting charged by the letter.
Yeah, true. I was just gonna say, take the whole paragraph out and put Google it.
All right, Joe. All right, I'll do that for.
So that whole section is out in the middle.
That's exactly my.
That's where you're, you're gonna be, yeah.
So, so you mentioned.
Did you want to talk about those photos?
Are we putting the websites in, you talking about that?
I, I wanted to get the, the text stuff out of the way.
Are we putting the websites in or no?
No, I would take all the website out and everything. I mean, I would, I would, everything you said is. Cause that's what we did, and we didn't write off the. We got from Homeward Trail, we got those corrections, so.
So that's from Wikipedia or that's from like the library website?
So that's all the text stuff I had.
Yeah.
Um.
So it didn't describe it, but Wikipedia described it, cool.
So, so are there any other text adjustments that people would like to see before we get into the pictures?
Um, I had, uh, within the master plan, okay, we're gonna put the library underneath the township hall picture on page twenty one, is that what we were thinking, moving the township hall picture up a little bit?
I'll put it under community.
And put it under, yeah.
Yeah, cause it, it would fit there, I think this can slide up a little bit, although I'm not sure.
It will work it out.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I've got, and this is just, I mean, on page twenty five, in the description of the Free Wild Anchor, um, it's underlined, it says the Free Wild Anchor pictured right is public memorial, I, I just think it needs an A in there. It's a public memorial, so I mean, just minor, but we might as well, you know, fix what we can.
I'm sorry, I'm just.
Page twenty five?
Page twenty five, in the underlined section next to the picture. Um, it says the Free Wild Anchor pictured right is public memorial in recognition or, but or recognizati- yeah, that needs to, that word needs to change. Um, so it needs to say is a public memorial. And then in recognition, recognition is spelled.
I think recognition is spelled.
Oh, and recognition, yeah.
So that needs to be fixed.
And on that page, I kinda wanted to add, we don't, there was a picture of the Iron Mike.
Yeah.
But, so I think you need to add, not pictured is a memorial garden for Iron Mike. Um, I, I just feel we need to actually add that in there.
That's a good idea.
Can we try taking the picture one more time? Because there's something behind it.
That's black.
That's making it look like I-R-O-M-I-K. In the picture.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
I, I don't know if there's any way to edit it, so maybe try taking it again from a slightly different angle.
Yeah, yeah, I will try and do that.
Okay. And I will ship that out, so it's.
Is that for page twenty five?
For page twenty five, like, put it below it.
Okay.
Um, so maybe shrink it up just a bit and put this one below it. But we're gonna provide you with a better copy.
Okay.
A better picture?
Well, we're gonna try to provide.
We're gonna try, and if not, then like, if we just put, not, also not pictured is. Yeah.
Not, not pictured is.
Here is a memorial. Okay. For Iron Mike, just, I, we need to do that.
Yeah, I would agree.
And then. The picture?
Yeah.
Uh, the picture that was taken isn't real clear, what it is.
Oh, this one's not, yeah.
No, no.
No, no, this one is clear, there's another, there's another one in the group.
Oh, and that one's, I didn't.
But it's not in here.
Yes, I did.
It's in here, yeah, so it is.
No, I didn't look at these, she just.
Picture number.
I sent them out in a link that I actually walked you through getting to.
Picture number eighteen.
No, no.
These are all the same pictures.
Yeah, I just realized.
It's picture number eighteen on the, what is handed out at the table?
I can't.
You know I'm picking on you.
No excuses.
Is this, um.
I'm leaving.
Iron Mike sign?
Mm-hmm, yeah, you can't really read it.
Right, so Beth is gonna try and get a better picture from a different angle, and if she can, then we'll try and put it in there, but if not, then if we just
Leave in the way.
Yeah, right.
have, not, like Beth said, not pictured is a memorial.
Yeah, that also.
Any other text amendments?
So.
I think it's a memorial garden. Um, actually, yes, um, it is chapter, the chapter two page.
Three? The first, the front cover page?
Oh, I'm at chapter three, hold on, okay.
I'll hear the chapter.
We actually had discussed about, um.
I already developed an improvement.
Let's see, it's, it would be like, not page five, but page five?
It's page.
Yeah, it is page five.
It would be page five, yeah.
We discussed about, um, the, let's see, demographics are all vital to painting a clear picture of the future, and its fabric was left in there, we had discussed canvas.
Hmm, mm-hmm.
Right here.
Mm-hmm.
We're talking about painting, so canvas fit better than fabric?
Yeah.
To future.
Canvas.
Canvas.
Words, the wordsmithing that was done.
Instead of fabric, change it to canvas, because we're talking about painting a clear picture.
Yeah.
Okay. Picture, oh, okay.
Also, before that, um, the, the pre numbering, the I, 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 triple I.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And then it skips a page, and it's triple I again.
Hmm, okay.
So, I don't know if that should be, I don't know if we're counting the blank page.
And it's triple I, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it, but it repeats.
But it repeats the triple I.
Yeah.
So the underlying stuff, the underline's gonna be gone, right? That's just, cause there's a change?
That was to, yeah, that was.
Know the change.
No, that, the change has remained.
Oh, yeah, now I see, three blank, three.
But that'll be removed when presented to, yeah.
Yeah, I thought, so I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
I think so too.
Okay.
I, I think they use the word fabric because you're talking about the demographics and the painting a clear picture, and fabric is like woven into the community, so it's talking about different demographics, you know? I think that's why they use fabric, I would think, just so that everything is woven together, but, so canvas makes sense because you're talking about painting, but.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out why they use, I'm trying to figure out why they use fabric, but that's probably why.
Because of the analogy.
Now, you can paint on fabric.
Yeah, exactly.
But then we would just call it a canvas.
That's right.
Yeah.
So do we need to take a census of who wants it fabric?
No, 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 yeah, yeah.
We're here at the last.
I was gonna say, well, no.
No, I think we're just improving, are looking through the pictures? Are there any other text changes?
Yeah, we already went. Um, you know, on page twenty-five also, um, the last paragraph, one such opportunity is our neighborhood park, this town, this township only departsal,
That was, I guess.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
okay, is southwest of the village, okay, nope, I read it different, so this is good.
Maybe it's a little too wordy, one such opportunity?
No, I was thinking that, that the township owns a parcel, I just might go through, so that's, I, I got it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's alright.
Yeah, what am I wearing on?
Don't know, yeah.
Yeah, fifty-four.
No change, okay, any other text changes?
Yeah, but.
That's from fast reading.
Okay. Now, pictures? Oh, I love the green infrastructure one, those are great.
The sc- the high school picture looks sweet too, with the tennis courts and everything.
Yes, I agree, I showed my son.
That one looked really cool. You showed your kids? Yeah, it looks nice.
This is your school?
Mm-hmm.
Ki- okay, can we talk about the new, um, school district map that was provided today?
This one?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Where it does.
It looks really good.
I like it, I'm just not sure, do we need the whole Romeo district on there? We were, we were concerned about showing the whole Armada.
Right.
I, I don't know, I, I just.
Let's just make it bigger and show all of Armada.
Well, that's what we had before, that doesn't show, show everything.
Yeah, I think the problem, the problem was too, is that the, the more zoomed out it was, it was hard to know if you were looking at a specific road, you know, like even we're out over, I, I just happen to be on McFadden over on the very edge, and looking at some of the other maps where it was like very zoomed out, it was hard to tell whether you would be in Romeo or in Armada, just because the roads were not super clear.
Okay.
So it is kinda nice that it's zoomed in over there, but it may be a false sense of the s- the scale of, you know, the Romeo schools, but.
I do, I, I do like the idea of like, just, like, having like this part right here, where, where it does include the other townships, or the, the other townships that the Armada School District goes into.
The immediately adjacent ones?
But we don't need the whole Romeo.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not.
We only, I mean, we do have to have some of Romeo in here, but not.
Yeah, some of Romeo, but not all, yeah.
Not, not all of it, right, run it down here.
Right.
Run it down here.
Yeah, put the line like.
We don't need houses, we don't need Romeo School District in green, just.
Here?
Right, right, we just.
Yep.
Yeah. For Armada.
Yeah, but I do like showing the whole thing, cause it's a very false sense of.
Right.
Well, they need to just show the, the, the.
Do you?
Armada School District, you don't show them.
That.
Do you leave some of the green where some of Romeo is in the Armada District?
Well.
Yeah, I, that could not be, yeah, cause then it's kinda like identified, like, hey, even though this is in Armada, technically you're Romeo schools here.
But, we can do that for, for, for.
Or.
But you do have, for, for.
Yeah, I guess that's true.
Or Riley, or Richmond, or Levis, so I, I don't think that we, we don't need it in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So. Okay. So Brigitte's asking, um, do we wanna cut it off on the west side of the village of Romeo?
At the township line there?
Or?
Well, if we could actually cut it off, if we do like from Dryden, Dryden Township, Addison Township, or township.
So just take that chunk of line.
Mm-hmm.
Take the township line, and just keep it into that.
Just make it bigger, yeah.
Give it the.
And then the same thing on the bottom, with Chatterfield Township and Rochester Hills, just cut that off, so box it in.
No.
You're gonna show that much of it?
Yeah, so, so you can take it across the bottom, we don't need that.
Mm-hmm. So then that will be this part?
So Chris, this last box and this first side, right?
She's saying like that.
But all the way down.
Oh, but show, so you're only gonna cut out this little bit of Romeo?
So, what do you guys, you guys, everybody's got it? We're going down the township lines, yeah, or you're gonna, you're going deeper?
I just.
No, we're taking out, at, yes.
You wanna take out?
Well, go ahead, Beth, you explain.
Oh, I, I just thought we could just take it like from this line right here to this line right here, and just, you know, take the green out, just take the green out, and we'll just leave the purple Armada and.
That's how I did it.
Well, but we need the green, because part of Armada is green.
No, it is the green.
That's, that's the whole reason it's showing.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Because the thirty-four mile and south by, by Walcott is all green.
Yeah, you want the green.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We just want Armada to be more in the center, because we're the most important on this plan.
Well, then, do you wanna show where some, I guess the one benefit of still keeping in the Romeo Community Schools is to show where, if you are in that school district, where all the students.
Because there are students that live in Romeo that are, are made of schools.
Right.
So.
That's true, because they got Addison, they got Shelby.
There's a little block right here.
Right.
It shows like the reach in the mix.
Vice versa, too.
Yeah, and both schools are schools of choice as well.
Yes, they're all schools.
So you could enter that school district, the Romeo School District.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Just to show.
We were just talking about the map, so, you wanna leave it then?
It makes sa- I, yeah, it, it does make sense, because in, in the township, but then again, the school district map, it says, I don't know.
Yeah, a school district map, you should show the whole district, it's kind of a false sense of the district if you don't show the entire district.
Right.
But I don't think it should be zoomed out so far that you, again, we're not necessarily trying to show off Romeo School District, we're trying to present Armada Township School District, Armada School District. So even if we cut off part of Romeo's, that to me would be acceptable, we're trying to show, but like, again, I was looking at this map going, okay, I am right on the edge, but they show
Right.
Armada Center Road, none of, you know, McFadden, McKay, none of those roads, so I said, I, I would not be able to tell from this map whether I would fall in Romeo or Armada, based on where I live, but on this map, it's clear as day. So it's almost like we need a hybrid between this and this, so we're just, we're too zoomed in here and too zoomed out here.
Maybe we could include more roads too, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That would, yeah, that could be helpful too.
And not to throw wrench in it, but it says, school district, and it's, it's school of choice, so it's open, they don't have to stay within this parameter.
But, go ahead.
Oh, okay.
No, they don't, but most, though.
No, but that's where the busing.
Right, exactly, but it would deter.
And most parents know that whether you're a school of choice or not, whether you choose to, and that's, all schools are schools of choice.
Okay.
You have to fill out different reports.
Say that again.
Not all schools are schools of choice, because it depends on how much enrollment space they have left.
That's what I'm asking.
Can't they change that year to year?
Yes.
I think they can change it, so.
Okay.
Their zone.
Yeah, this is your area.
But when if you have young kids, you're gonna know how to go about looking into schools of choice if you wanna look at the different districts.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and if it's, and it really is, I mean, if you go out of district and your buses don't run, I mean, and you have two parents at work, it is a, if you're moving to an area, it's a major issue, if you have to drive your kids every single day.
Right. Because school of choice kids are not transported.
Right, right, if they're out of, if they're out of the busing zone, which would be your district.
Just the busing zone, but that, they still can come out of the area, that I know.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they can come out of the area, but.
But you just have to be driven.
Like, Armada is not gonna provide transportation to Armada kids going to Romeo, Romeo doesn't provide transportation to Romeo kids going to Armada.
Yeah, if they're moving to our area. Yes.
So.
Yeah.
Okay.
You probably wanna, do you wanna?
Yep, yeah, exactly.
Should we reword it?
To rezone?
No, your parent, you know.
Well, no. Well, it's not bad.
Alright.
Yeah.
One other question for, back to page twenty-seven, under broadband.
Oh my gosh, I'm working on it.
Are ya?
Yeah.
Well, just take, take out, take out now or put a comma after now, in the first part of the paragraph, more than ever.
Um, now, more than ever.
Now, comma, more than ever.
Comma, Wi-Fi and broad, broadband.
Comma.
I like just taking out now, just more than ever.
Well, either.
Yeah, just more than ever, yeah.
Yeah.
More than ever, comma.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I think that, I like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that, Joel.
Alright.
So take out now and just capitalize.
Sorry, I forgot.
That's right, you remember, more than ever.
More than ever.
Still might have to go. And I, I'll give this one more.
Hang on, here, you can see. If you want, I can actually pull, give you this page.
I guess I'm just surprised that there wasn't a, like, designation, a future land use designation for it.
Yeah.
It's alright, I'll just finish, so do you want a future land use?
They weren't good to get real, we're just.
Page thirty-two.
So, I feel like we might need to add.
Sarah.
I'm coming, I'm getting there.
Way to use.
Okay, page thirty-two.
It's just a dramatic capital I.
Yeah.
In collaboration with Lake Orchard, Armada Township is working with, uh, going, is that a, I can't see it.
In collaboration with Lake Orchard, Armada Township is working with.
Shouldn't it be a capital? Like.
In collaboration is capitalized.
That's capital, okay, I'm sorry, I had that too, that's it.
Okay.
What, what was decided on the broadband page?
Remove now.
Okay, wanted it to be true, cause we were.
The first word, yeah. More than ever.
Anything else? I just wanna say, great job to everyone, um, who came up with all these pictures, they, they're really nice pictures, everyone.
They're really great.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And, and Laura did say in an email that we can add, any pictures that aren't chosen to go into the body can be added in an appendix.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
I kinda thought, if, I don't know what everybody else thinks, on the second page, where it says, the Armada Park, twenty-twenty-four Master Plan, or maybe the American flag, pictures that go on the, what are you?
On which page, Beth?
Um, the second page, uh, yeah.
I?
Or the township.
Where it just says the twenty-twenty-four Master Plan?
So, okay.
Yeah, where it just has this.
So this one?
Mm-hmm. I thought, maybe on the bottom right.
Oh, okay.
But do we wanna introduce everybody to Armada in the snow?
It's pretty.
It's gorgeous.
That's a beautiful peg.
I'm, I'm just being, double bedded.
Henshaw, Henshaw, three, three and all.
It's pretty when you're looking at someplace warm and sunny.
Yeah.
From your window.
Or, yeah, curled up on the couch with a good song.
Just a thought.
Makes you wanna.
Right, yeah, it's pretty, I'm just wondering, like, the industry area plan, do we take a picture of that instead of this, it's just a lot of tree, you know, you don't really see a lot of building?
So just like right here.
Do you replace a picture with?
Yeah.
It's like the old one, that might be.
You wanna like a photo of a little area?
Let's see what we end up with.
Do you think that would be worth going, like, where that, the new Henshaw, that maybe you show it?
Yeah, we're asked about that agenda item.
We, we could, do we, all, all four seasons, yeah.
I just have to discourage, you know, the industrial.
Something like that.
So, we, we went through the text, but we haven't done the picture.
Well, oh. Oh, okay, listen, right, that's what I was gonna say.
We're just in time for the voting.
I wonder if that way I could take.
Doesn't work, it doesn't work.
Yeah.
So do we wanna pause and ask DJ if he's got any text amendments?
I'll, I'll see if it, if it works.
Do you have any additional?
Mine, I just took a. Probably do, I don't know what you covered, I apologize, putting it too late, but, um, did you go through the very last, the, um, the implement, implementation plan, which is page five?
Not yet.
Not yet.
No.
Not yet.
So you just kind of go through the be- through the beginning?
Look before you want.
Implement.
We didn't, yeah, we didn't have one day from.
No, we didn't. Not today.
The implementation.
I had a suggestion for the.
Chapter five.
Fifty six.
Page, was the map?
The, go put that picture, Joe. On, on this. The Google car hasn't been down that road yet, but.
Oh, so, DJ, we got maps today.
Uh.
This is actually.
Oh, that's the pond, that's where the pond guy is now, or, yeah, that's actually Romeo's now, yep.
Yeah. So we should.
I'm gonna.
Did you go over this implement, implement, implement?
No.
No.
Implementation.
Okay, I was just gonna make a suggestion that we've got this.
Fifty four. And I'm right down by Henchaw, I can take a picture.
Strategic Action Plan on page fifty eight.
Yeah.
If, and we've got a blank page on page sixty, if we were to move page sixty, the blank page to where fifty six is, that would put the key. And the plan right across from each other, where you didn't have to keep going like this.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that would work.
Just by moving this blank page here, it's shifting everything one page.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And then you could see the key and the, the plan together.
So. So make page fifty six blank.
Make fifty six blank.
Oh, fifty six blank.
And then move everything back a page and then it'll, it'll be much easier to use.
Okay.
And that makes sense, so this would be on the same page.
Okay.
These two would be right across from each other and then people like this, to see the key and the plan.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so fifty six blank, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Also, uh, page fifty four, Joe and I found, uh, in the industrial park, it's not ours anymore. So that picture really doesn't really apply, it's, it's in the Romeo area.
No, that picture is actually the pond guy. And the pond guy is still in Armada.
And the pond guy is, yeah, he did not move.
Yes.
He did not move.
Yeah, he added another building, he has a second building, he has a second building.
But he did not join the annexation, he declined.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's still in the township.
Okay. Which is fine, I just, I just noticed that there's just a lot of trees blocking the building, I know the new Henchaw building is just a nice, very nice new building. And I could, I would say I'm always down there, I could take a picture of that if we wanted to replace it, which is a newer structure to make it, to show that we have new buildings, newer buildings coming up in the facility to, or in the area too.
So.
I didn't realize he didn't, he, I, I started it.
The, the pond guy owns the land, owns his land then?
Okay.
Does REI rent from him now? Because isn't REI in this?
REI sold to whatever, but REI is still part of, um.
Sold to.
He followed Chuck.
Okay, that building, that, that person.
If I'm, I could be wrong, but I, I'm pretty sure he did.
Okay.
Back to what you're saying, DJ, what about, um, and I don't know if this is a matter of point and click, Chris, where you take fifty seven, make fifty seven, fifty six.
That's what he was saying, yeah.
Well, you said leave page fifty six blank.
Well.
Yeah, and then you just, we all go back one page and that puts the key and the plan together on the same page.
Right, so you're not looking back and forth.
Just, you just shift and blank page from beginning to the end.
Mm-hmm.
So fifty six will be blank and.
Right, I'm saying put this here.
And, and what's on page fifty six is gonna be page fifty seven.
Will be fifty seven.
Correct.
And then this will be fifty eight.
Fifty eight, fifty nine.
So you'd be a left and right hand page together.
And, and bear with me here, because you're flipping this page, okay, you're looking at the map, you flip over to the key.
No, the key won't be there, the key will be later.
On the next page.
The next page, along with the plan, together on the same, as you open it up, the plan and the key will be together.
That's what I'm saying. So you might this way?
This is what he wants.
If you take.
So this is page fifty eight, this is page fifty seven, so you know, fifty seven here.
Take one from one packet and one from another.
And so, so you have this and this, so you can read.
Both together, and that's my point.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm sorry, it's gonna be like this.
Okay.
Like this and like this, so this will be here and this will be here.
Right, so that's why I'm saying, why don't we?
This isn't gonna be there.
This isn't gonna be there, so why don't we? Go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, everything just goes back one page.
Correct, but why don't we, and, and if you don't mind me suggesting not to, we're looking at this page, yes it is. Why don't, we have this for fifty five and put this for fifty six and fifty seven next to it.
Because.
Is that too messy?
Fifty five is the map.
It's easy, yeah, the map.
Yeah, leave fifty five as it is.
Yep.
Or do you want them all show, you wanna see all of them, because this is flipping the page as it is, like you said.
That was.
Why can't we put them side by side on fifty six and fifty seven?
That's what you're saying, that's what.
That's.
Don't say leave fifty six blank.
Sorry, no problem. So fifty six just is blank and then everything is lined up, you only have to move one, one page.
For that fifty seven to fifty eight, so this will be like this. This will be fifty eight, this will be fifty nine.
Okay.
So, so like I said, so this will be, I can, well, because it's backwards, say the, say.
Yeah, say that's the page, right.
Right, so, so it's like this, so you have it open and you can go from here to here.
Correct, and then you can have this separate, but he said leave fifty six blank.
Cause you, you understand how, just move that one thing, it'll make.
Yeah, the idea is so that the key is next to the.
Yeah, key is on the same page.
Next to the map.
Next to the.
Next to the plan.
To the chart, right?
Or to the chart, same thing, the map, sure, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm trying to solve my memory, so bear with me, on page fif- or forty one, under the goal one.
Forty one.
Okay.
And there's object, objective is purchase of development rights.
Mm-hmm.
And it says, um, participate in the purchase of development rights, we are, we are like one of the founding members, we are participating, it should be continue participating.
That's true, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Continue to or continue participating?
Continue, I think continue to participate.
Continue. Just so that they, we are, they realize we're actively participating, not like something we're thinking about doing.
Continued participation.
Yeah, we're not, we're not just thinking about, yeah.
Yeah.
That we continue to participate, I think, but, I don't know the words, man.
Mm-hmm. We are continuing to participate.
Okay.
Okay.
Forty one, anything else, you wanna look through this?
Actually, it, yeah, I can.
You can come through this one.
If it's an, if it's in order, I'll, I might remember.
Yeah. It's almost in order, let me add these pages, and this is already. Nine groups.
Taking this out.
We're still keeping this.
Yes.
Your mind's in order.
I'm just adding these pages.
Do, did you address the list of maps, the formatting?
Yep.
That should be the same size as the other one.
Okay.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
We didn't rush out.
No, we didn't address.
The, speak to what you're.
On page V?
All right, you're right, you're right.
All right, the Roman numeral one?
The list of maps, oh, yeah, they're, they're not lined up.
Okay.
I figured.
All right, I got you.
So on page V, the list of maps.
And I actually would like to see it a little bit bigger font, because it's a lot smaller than the rest of the font.
Page V. Right.
What's, what's the page next to V?
It wasn't.
It's right after the.
Or in the beginning, Roman.
The very beginning.
After the table of contents.
So it's after the appendixes.
Yeah, appendix, page, the list of maps should be the same font as the rest of this and the numbers should all be lined up just a format, I'm sure it's, because it was kinda last minute.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yep, did I?
I'm in that order, this is more in order.
I'm hoping you jump out at me as I see them. Oh, did you already discuss page six about the cider mills, that second paragraph?
No.
Page six, no.
Large farms, orchard cider mills and farm markets.
So the underlines are just pointing out things that she changed from the last one?
Mm-hmm.
Well.
It's underlined, your question.
Well, page six, that, that second paragraph, the first sentence is a big run-on sentence. Think it would, and I think it would make more sense if we kinda said, um, are the predominant land uses in the township, period. And then start off with small amounts of industrial and industrial land are located in the southeast corner near the village, as well as pockets of commercial along thirty two, it's just a, it's a half a paragraph long sentence.
Yeah.
And the other thing is the cider mills added, it's. It's saying that cider mills and farm markets and single-family homes, large are predominant land uses in the township. And they really aren't, I mean, predominant land uses mainly farms and single-family homes.
Mm-hmm. Single-family homes.
And we do mention that several orchards and cider mills are popular destinations in the region, I think that kinda covers the cider mills, I think that we did, we need to add.
Let's just add farm markets down to orchards and cider mills.
Yeah, do we need to have cider mills and in the first sentence or?
Cider mills, so, yeah, cider mills and farm markets should be taken out, should be single-family homes and agricultural farms or, you know, large-scale farms.
So take out.
Yeah, a lot, yeah, a lot. Could be large farms, orchards and single-family homes, and then, cause we're covering the cider mills and orchards in the end of that paragraph, so I just think that, that whole sentence needs to be split up and trimmed down to be a little more accurate.
Mm-hmm.
And then fit in cider mills and farm markets.
Yeah, I completely agree, cider mills and farm markets should be taken out, so it should just read large farms, orchards and single-family homes are the predominant land use.
Yeah.
Right, cause that's, it's predominant.
Yeah.
Yeah, hundred percent.
Is that, everybody agree with that?
Yeah, I already made the changes on my copy.
Yeah. Why would you take out farm markets?
I think we need to have the farm markets.
Cause the farm market.
The farm markets could stay, but the cider mills and that would be.
The cider mall and takes out, yes.
Or you could move the farm markets down to where several orchards and cider mills.
Yeah, I could go down there.
Either, either or.
That's good, you can do.
I, I just don't believe farm markets are predominant land use, a farm market is a, a portion of an acre of, you know, you're talking about predominant land use, a farm market is not a predominant land use.
Get rid of that.
We, we offer a lot of farm markets in the area, but it's not a predominant land use.
So move it down with the orchards and cider mills.
Yeah, exactly.
The popular destination.
The orchard, cider mills and farm markets.
Oh, popular destination.
I moved where?
Last sentence of paragraph two.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Bottom sentence with less relocations of what are.
So orchard, cider mills and farm markets.
Cause they are popular destinations.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I would absolutely go under popular destinations.
Okay, so how's that sentence sound now? The township is also home to the annual Armada Fair, which has been running for one hundred fifty years, along with several orchards, cider mills and farm markets.
Cider mills.
It's a run-on sentence.
Which are popular destinations for the larger region.
No, I mean, it would read.
We can make it into two sentences.
Yeah, Armada Fair, which is a pop, has been running for a hundred fifty years, along with several orchards, cider mills, farm market, and farm markets, which is a pop- popular destinations for a larger region.
So I say a, a period after the hundred fifty years and then.
And then another sentence, several orchards, cider mills and farm markets are popular destinations. And just leave it at that.
Yeah. Several orchards, cider mills and farm markets, are we throwing farm markets down there?
Yeah, yeah, several orchards, cider mills and farm markets are popular destinations.
Yep.
Is it, does it make more sense instead of for the lar-?
Are popular destinations for the larger.
I would take for the larger region out.
I would say, yeah, popular destinations in the township, within the township.
Yeah.
It's not, I don't think it's a run-on sentence.
No, 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 we're just talking about taking for the larger region, instead of that, just say a hundred fifty years, along with several orchards, cider mills and farm markets, which are popular destinations within the township.
Hundred fifty, yeah. Yeah, I would leave it.
Along with, we're not separating that?
I would separate.
Why?
It's a run-on sentence?
Yeah.
Not grammatically correct?
Yeah.
Why is that? Yes, it is, I would beg to doubt.
It's too.
But it's up to you guys.
And s- and, and the cider mills are.
It is not.
Are popular destinations for the larger region, because when I lived in Sterling Heights, I came up to Lakes.
Right, right.
So.
Yeah, that's true.
Or change also.
For the metro area.
For the metro area.
It's in Detroit, obviously.
Yeah, I would do metro area for the larger regions. Thoughts?
Also, we'll move.
Okay.
I like metro area better than larger region, personally.
Orchard, cider mills and farm markets are popular destinations for the metro area, area.
Yeah.
I like that better than the larger regions.
Yeah, or the township, you know, the, or the township, one of the two. So it would read.
But Chris is right, I mean, people come here and, you know, Washington, from all over, you know.
So the township, yeah, the township is also home to the annual Armada Fair, which has been running for a hundred fifty years.
It deserves its own sense.
For sure, so then you pause it.
The Armada Fair does.
Right. Yeah, other, other, yeah.
And then orchards, cider mills, farm markets are popular destinations. For.
Also in the te- or, yeah.
Also in the township or for the metro area, what are we doing?
Yep.
So it is grammatically correct, as is. Just, uh, I.
Okay, but, it deserves its own sense, I think, we can vote on it, you wanna vote on it?
No, I'm talking about.
Also.
Okay.
They need to decide.
What do you wanna do with that?
No, I, I like it, I like it as its own sentence, and I, but I would just, I, I do like it as its own sentence, and I would just say, you know, other.
Two sentences or one?
Yeah, several orchards, cider mills and farm markets are also popular destinations within the township.
Yeah, I like that, because it, it separates it.
I would do with township or metro area.
I like township, just because we're not.
Within the township, cause that's what we're talking about, all about the township.
Yeah.
But it's, these are attractions.
It's our regional.
From the metro.
From everywhere, yeah.
For people that are in the metro area.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Is my point.
Metro area does, that is a tr- yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
I mean, most of the traffic at Lakes is not from Armada.
Oh, a hundred percent, yeah, absolutely.
Well, we know that.
Yeah, yeah, so you would just take out along with, so you just start within several orchards, cider mills and farm markets are also popular destinations within the metro area.
Destinations. Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, either.
From the metro area, that sounded good when he said it.
Within or for?
I say for the metro area, but.
But within fits too.
Yeah, e- either one.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I would say, I don't know, I think it's almost better with, within, because I'm, people feel more included, yeah.
Within.
That's true, very true.
The Joe, Joe's.
Oh, the Joseph head on this one.
Great, I'm being grouped, I'm getting grouped over here.
Sometimes you are.
Right there, yeah.
This was first sentence and the last sentence.
Yeah.
Dynamic duo, look out.
Okay, the first sentence, yeah, for sure, that was long.
That was DJ.
Where'd they split that?
Right after township.
Right here. Okay. Ruby? I just do it so I don't forget.
Anything else?
Anything else, do, any other text amendments, DJ, did you go through them?
Yeah, all I can remember, it was some of the pictures, I noticed on. The one page we used, uh, Geyers twice, um, page, page twelve, page twelve, same picture, we, we use it for fences and on page twelve.
Do we wanna just take the picture, the, the pictures and go page by page and?
And vote or pick them out?
Page twelve or is the other page, DJ?
It's on, on fences, which is, um, towards the back, um. Forty one, was it? Forty, it's in the forties.
They, they stuck your horses on page forty one.
Yeah, page forty one.
Yeah, so now that's.
Forty is weird, I'm not seeing that. No, it's in, where, where's fences somewhere?
I'm trying to.
I saw a fence, there's a fence in here.
Oh, here it is, okay, so page fifty two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's the same as on page fourteen.
It's the same picture.
Yep.
So, I mean, that's.
Do we have another one that like dirty fence example?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, I got it right here.
Oh, yeah.
Page twelve would be on.
Oh, it's not, it's not fourteen anymore, it's twelve.
It's twelve.
Page twelve.
So, what is page twelve representing or whatever, what is that?
Twelve re- um, is economics, income?
Economics, economics is the page twelve, do we have another?
No, I thought it was going to forty one.
Do you need the photo on page fifty two?
I know, that's what I'm saying, we're gonna replace the twelve.
I think it fits on page fifty two, it does, it'll fit on page twelve.
The twelve. Yeah.
Um, so that's economics and the fifty two is talking about fences and it's got a beautiful fence in front, so.
I got you.
Oh, okay.
All right, so economics, there's something that.
So, yeah. I mean, may, maybe one of the, the, the downtown pictures on page twelve?
Yeah, it's economics.
The Grange Hall is kind of a cool, and it's a little bit of a wider, you could potentially make it a wider.
For economics. The, yeah, the Grange Hall would work.
Which number is that?
Um, it's, uh, twenty seven, it's e- either twenty seven or the overhead, twenty eight.
Oh, twenty seven. Oh, yeah, twenty eight's nice.
Fun fact, I used to play in the Grange Hall when I was a kid.
Yeah.
Cause it was on my grandma's property, so I, that was, it was sweet, so I was, used to remember playing in there, it was cool.
It was, I was, yeah. Joe, which one were you talking about?
Uh, either, I like the aerial view, it was kinda, just kinda.
Of the, the.
Yeah.
Twenty eight.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
So put that on twelve, twelve.
If, if it would fit, it's not super wide, but I don't know, the only other ones, there's a south, pay, or a, Beth sent a number twelve image, the south, me, but I don't know where else that was used, that was just another wide one.
Yeah, we've got Main Street South and Main Street North, eleven and twelve. Um, and I think they inserted at least one of them.
At least, yeah, at least eleven.
I don't think we've used number eight.
Kraus Field, number twenty three is wide.
Is it, or the, or the number eight Kraus Field, those are, that one's kinda.
Okay, so, Main Street South was used on page fifty six, that's gonna be fifty seven.
What about ten?
Wait, 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 wait.
Page thirty eight is the other Main Street?
Yeah, those ones made it in there. I like the Kraus Field wide, depending on how it would fit, that would possibly be.
Where are you talking about, put it?
It, just to replace that number on, on page of twelve, oh, is it on twenty three?
Kraus Field wide is number twenty three. Well, no, I mean, it's picture number twenty three, but we're talking about for page twelve.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
A- and when, when Sarah and I were going through and we were trying to kinda match the picture to the heading.
The wide, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So.
Maybe the section recreation or parks and recreation.
Yeah, that's why I'm thinking even, maybe use the Main Street.
Yeah.
Um, north.
Love it.
There.
Well, but.
The number three is Sabbath and Sunset Farm by DJ too.
I can't take that, it's Joyce.
But what I was thinking with the Kraus Field, I mean, that's, um.
Did we use thirty six?
The school's economic.
The sunburst, we'll use that.
You know. The sports help.
You know what we?
The money from the sports helps support.
We don't have a picture of the senior living, anything over there, I wonder if I, I mean, if I could get a picture of the, if it's sunny tomorrow night, like I could get a, a panoramic of a, yeah, the senior, o- over on that, the east, or west side of town.
Oh, you mean that one?
Do we, where do we put that?
Just to get something that is wide, to replace the image of Guyer's on page twelve, just to get a panoramic shot like that, of, of something.
Yeah.
But does that fit economics?
I don't know, I don't know, yeah.
Why don't you do the downtown one? And be done with it, it's our, not.
Yeah, we can rework that.
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Do we, do we wanna go back to the beginning and just look at each picture in order? And vote on?
Yeah. Whether it goes there or not?
It, it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, instead of jumping all around and?
I agree.
And I think that might be the first picture, although there's a couple.
So, do we have a, a title picture or front picture?
Or get a different, Chris, of it.
Or not yet?
So, first we, on three, we have our McKenna map, our regional location map, right?
Hang on.
Not doing pictures yet. Ooh, I like that one. Okay.
Also, do we want, do we wanna keep the picture on the front that's also on our vision plan page?
Well, I think we should have a different picture.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I think it looks good.
Let's look for another one.
The color five.
I like the winter wagon wheel one, from Beth, number twenty.
That's one of my favorites.
Yeah, be the front, we went there for the front.
Number twenty.
Twenty, well, that's suggested, as a candidate.
Wagon wheel, wagon wheel, I do like that one.
Snowy photo.
Okay, so three, we have the lo- regional location map, and then for two, after the, I mean, township, for chapter two, we have township character, it's a water tower with the baseball field behind it.
Beautiful.
It's pretty cool.
No, wait, no, wait, that did have an issue, I think we should crop the last bottom half inch off of that.
Oh.
Oh, cause the garbage can.
To get rid of the, the.
Dumpster, just take it up.
Yeah, can they crop that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Or, like, I, I know some photo editors will let you drag down.
Good idea.
From above, so it.
Bring the grass down all the way.
We, yeah, we probably won't manipulate the photo, but we'll crop it.
Okay.
You could put that into an AI generator and it would just take all that out and put nice grass in there.
Okay, so that, that's the issue for six, we have.
This is crop bottom. And page six. Okay.
Alright, the next picture for discussion is a community snapshot, it's a picture of barns.
And that's original, that, that's from the fourteen.
That was in the original, okay, so we might wanna change that up though.
I like it.
I do too.
For a community snapshot? Alright.
Yeah. Where's it in here?
It's not, these are the ones that didn't.
Gotcha.
I like that fairground picture. So, we're leaving seven, page seven is good for nine.
We're good with nine?
Yeah, page nine is the fields.
Yeah, we're nine.
Page nine?
That looks nice.
I really like that one.
Yeah.
So, that's the.
Yeah.
It is the track and the football field.
Page twelve.
Page twelve, we have economics and then the fence picture.
And which one did we talk about putting there instead?
Was it twenty eight, like, that's what I was drawing.
I think so.
The gray tall overhead?
Yeah.
I think I missed, I also missed eleven, the downtown.
Yep.
Did we mention that, did we skip one?
No picture.
I think we should change that.
Oh, to use, changing economics to the downtown.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what we're proposing.
So, number, change it to eleven?
No, they're gonna get a new picture.
Oh.
On page twelve, we're gonna change out the picture for a picture of downtown.
Which one?
The north or the south?
Page twelve.
No, which picture?
Which picture?
We don't have it yet, I thought someone would say.
Yeah, it's in there here.
No, it's in.
We have a north downtown and a south downtown.
I thought those were used.
Which ever one we didn't use?
Um, we didn't use north.
We used to vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
We didn't, we did not use north, so.
Yeah, no. So, number eleven.
North.
Where the hell do the rest of the pictures?
Me too.
Okay.
Should submit that.
I did.
Do you wanna look at which one it is?
Okay.
Okay, alright, yeah, gotcha, I just, I had them all in here, now I just have to look where the heck they are.
So, for page twelve, and for page fifteen, we have the barn, the next picture's page fifteen, is a barn that says Armada, on it, along K-Pac Road, it's right above the co- commuter's title.
Yeah, that's the top, that's our road.
I like that. I tried to take a picture and it was like, no, the truck, like, too much stress.
Good job.
She got.
She sat in my car, she looked at one of these and the cars invited me to come out.
She got it though. She got this picture while K-Pac Road was closed down, that's how she got it.
Oh, cool. So, it's older then?
Yeah, cause there's no way. She did a great job.
Okay, so, yeah, that's gonna stay there.
Yeah, keep that.
Alright.
Existing land use.
Page seventeen, under existing land use patterns, above the existing land use patterns is a, looks like soybean field.
Yeah, thank you.
With a combine back there.
Yeah, that's thirty three map.
Thirty three map?
That is?
Yeah.
I like that one too, what about on page sixteen, we have a lot of blanks on the bottom left there, sixteen.
It's using the land for sure. Alright.
Oh.
I don't know if you wanna put a picture in there or not, if we have X.
That's another commuting one. We could put, we could put a picture like, number nine, nine?
I like this, the little girl walking down the trail, with her, with her trails on.
Just a road. I.
No, I also don't.
She's a commuter for sure.
Yeah, except you don't want pictures of children in.
Well, but, but it's only her backside, you can't see her.
You can't recognize her, yeah.
Okay.
This is a silhouette.
And that's why I included it, I had a couple of face ones and I'm like, no, I'm not, I'm not adding her.
Hmm.
Who's drew it there?
No, don't we, isn't this the north side here on thirty eight?
Okay. That's the. So, possibly, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we did use, well, but let's, what is, what's that over?
Public engagement, community survey, background, future land use preferences, so, yeah, would fit better.
Okay.
Sixteen?
So, we could do.
Page sixteen, right?
No, she said they already used.
You said it's public engagement?
The north side is on page thirty eight.
There you go.
So, we need another photo for.
Well, what if we put the Kraus Field for public engagement?
Well, are we still on page sixteen, are we gonna put a picture?
Yeah, we, 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 we jumped around, so hold on, Sarah.
We're trying to find.
Page sixteen.
Alright, for page sixteen, we're proposing a picture in the blank space.
I know, and I can't find.
Number nine, there they.
It's on page thirty eight, the front, the down, the, that's the, that's the south view?
North view.
That's north.
And the south view is used on page fifty six.
Okay.
It's pretty checkmark by the pictures that are already used.
That's, I'm writing what page they're going on, so.
That's what I'm doing.
Alright, yep, did someone say picture nine, the road?
What about?
Never name.
Yeah, for, for on sixteen, yeah.
For on sixteen, yeah. Have we already used that somewhere?
Where?
Picture nine, the road?
I don't recall, but.
I'm just asking.
That's a good one, from the box.
So, we'll put number nine, I'm thinking we might have used that somewhere.
Sorry, did it stop? We weren't recording.
Can we, can we link up the pictures on this thing?
Um, the, I'm not sure what it'll do with the go-to meeting going.
Yeah, it'll probably not work.
That's.
Put in the chat.
Is there anybody on there?
Yeah.
There's nobody on here, sorry.
They're, they're all actually on our website.
Do we have anything to drag over the chat with the pictures, like you said?
So, if you.
I don't think that there's one of the Autumn Road.
On this computer?
Brigitte's got her laptop here.
Yeah, I can pull it up on here.
Okay, so if you go to, um, Armada Township dot org, and then put slash.
Armada T W P.
Oh, so T W P.
T W P dot org slash.
Autumn Road is on forty four.
Uh, forward slash Master Plan.
Is it?
The road's on forty four already?
You know, it's not the same one, I don't think.
Give it a sec. It's, it's gonna take, because they're all the full size pictures.
No, that's not the same one.
Well, it's hard to tell.
Forty four's the trail.
No, I'm gonna say send the, so, if you're on the website, where is it, how can we give them?
Uh, the website slash Master Plan, on the Master Plan page.
Oh, no.
Backslash Master Plan, or forward slash, forward slash.
Yeah, forward slash.
And I'm not seeing that we used picture nine, so I think it would work on page sixteen, I, I tried to flip through everything, and I didn't see what was used.
Well, that's good, cause I already wrote it in there on my page sixteen.
Okay.
So.
Me too. These are already posted on there?
No, not, not for anybody to see that off.
Yeah, this is yours.
Why is it not coming up?
It's a different picture, for Autumn Road.
It's still loading.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, DJ's starting to come up.
Two road.
Cause you're not ready to come up.
Yeah.
Look at the one that's in here.
Alright, so we did seventeen was okay, everyone liked, eighteen is a map. Nineteen, twenty.
So, we're adding picture nine.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, and then the next picture is on page twenty one, we don't have a picture of the library, do we?
No.
Okay, so we're just gonna, the talk earlier, um, for DJ's benefit was the picture of, um, Township Hall, we're gonna slide it up a little bit, and so we can fit the library, yeah.
And I think that should be brief, I don't think it's.
Yeah, it was words.
Yeah, we've worked, lifted down to a cup, yeah.
So, I'm sorry, page is, what page is that?
That was page twenty one.
Page twenty one for the Township Hall, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, twenty two talks about the senior center, and there's a picture of the senior center in the park, so that's all fitting. And then the tornado sirens, and then on page twenty three is a picture of the fire department. So, yeah, that works, um, page twenty four, Parks and Rec does have that snowy, um, path.
That's really pretty, the snowy path one, on page twenty four?
Yeah.
Now, all, all of the, it seems like all of the pictures of the trail we've got are actually in Richmond Township.
This one may, this one may be by Cone Creek.
It's our trail, it's okay.
You think?
There's a bridge right there.
Is there, okay.
Yeah, yes, so it could be the one by Cone Creek.
No.
Well, it is now.
We're, we're gonna claim it is.
There's, there's a bridge, a bridge by Omo, and there's a bridge by, behind the water department.
Okay, so this is, um, page, maybe a different, twenty four, maybe, number forty one, alright.
Okay, and then page twenty five. Is the, um, Free Wild Anchor, and then we're going to somehow either get another picture
That's Iron Mike.
of the Mo- Iron Mike Memorial, or at least reference it.
And there, yeah, yes, and you can't get it all in one picture.
Oh, six.
Okay. Right, it, it just, yeah.
It still looks nicer with one bigger picture than the two little pictures we had.
Yeah.
So, maybe just add that caption.
Just add the caption.
Where would the caption go?
Um.
In here.
Right with, yeah.
Township Parks, page.
Yeah.
Twenty five.
So, it talks about the anchor, and then also reference, just, um.
When's this paper from? Is this a new picture?
Took that one.
Um, there's a, i- i- it's a garden, PFC Iron Mike Garden, is that what it is?
Yeah, a memorial garden.
Memorial garden.
PFC, Iron Mark, Memorial Garden.
It's, it's too bad that the seasons and that.
Yeah, there's got Christmas stuff up.
It is also here or something, so however that.
I'll try and go up there tomorrow and see, I don't know if maybe they leave those lights on year round, or if they take them off.
Pull the burlap off.
Yeah, just do, but who knows what it looks like on the.
Okay, so it's at the.
It's, yeah, it is at the Free Wild.
It was pretty nice yesterday, or today.
It, it's, there, there's a building there, um, a concession building, and it's next to there.
A pavilion?
No, the PFC Iron Mike.
Oh.
Memorial.
Okay.
See?
Iron Mike or Mark?
Mike, Mike.
Oh, Iron Mike.
Okay, and it's ne- is that a concession building? Or is that the bathrooms?
Pavilion.
It's all one building.
I think it's the bathrooms, isn't it?
I don't think that there's a concession building there.
I don't think so.
I, 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 I was only, I've only been there a few times to, like, put signs up. I haven't been there in several years. So, so it might be the bathrooms, it might be.
So, I mustn't, I don't know.
I think it's the rustures, to be honest.
But it's, it's.
There's no concession building.
I believe that the iron, that, that.
But people bring stuff usually.
So, it's like, you know, to the side of this.
Okay, and then page thirty two is.
The garden room, I mean, it'd be better, but you know. They go home. Alright, the next page.
It's at twenty nine, right?
No, it's, it's only.
We were at twenty four, and twenty five.
And it should.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm just jumping pages.
And then we're, we're on twenty nine for the school district, so there's a great picture of the schools, that looks beautiful.
Seven, twenty eight, yeah, twenty nine, that is.
Twenty nine, school district.
Thirty's the map, thirty one's the network, and then thirty two has the side of the road and a tree.
Snow town.
Alright, then we got thirty, the map, yep, and then we're, chapter three, and we have page thirty two, and it says traffic patterns.
And traffic counts, yeah, there's, and there's no traffic, we like that.
Yeah, there's no traffic, that's a good advertisement.
I believe, that is an original picture, it was just moved from another place.
Right. I think I remember that.
Question for you, um, on the study, is it a hardship to switch that if we come out with a, uh, more data?
What study, what page are you on, Joe?
Uh, page thirty five, excuse me, uh, high frequency crash locations.
Oh, see, yelling me for going ahead.
Oh, we're doing a traffic study.
The map.
So, is it a hardship to switch that, you, you know, to the new updated one?
When is it being done?
Well, I don't know yet, we're, we're in the.
Twenty two.
Midst of doing it, so, my point is, is it hard to switch this?
It could also be done after the thirty, the sixty two, sixty three day review period, before updated.
After it's. Okay, yeah, I knew there was a window, but I wasn't positive.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
With, with more updated data, yeah.
Yes, I, I'll let Chris know.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you can do that if it's a public review.
I like these pictures on thirty six, green infrastructure, I like those.
Me too.
Those, those were original.
I like them.
Really? They're original?
Yeah, they were in the twenty fourteen.
Oh, wow.
Yep, these are pretty new.
So, don't know where they came from.
They're probably not our.
Yeah, just examples.
Yeah, do we wanna put one of ours in? I do like those a lot though.
Well, but the green infrastructure.
It, it fits the title.
Yeah, totally fits the title.
Oh. Yeah, yeah.
I was all in order when I got here, I don't know what the heck happened. Oh, Jesus.
Page thirteen.
Okay, so, we have thirty six.
Alright, we are on page thirty two, we had what picture?
Thirty seven, vision through the future. I'm on thirty eight.
That was old, we already talked about that, now we're on thirty eight, and it's.
Thirty eight.
Thirty eight is the north side of town, and we were gonna put that on twelve, so is there another picture for?
For community engagement.
There's the south side.
But we have the south side somewhere too, don't we?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah. So, this is.
So, let's pick something else.
This is community engagement results, community wide survey, future land preferences.
So, let's go back to our extra pictures.
Yeah, this one says commercial uses and talks about stores, retail space, probably we want the retail space pictured here.
Do I put?
Yeah, but it also fits on economics.
That's true, do you know the both?
Well, where is the other one put, where, what's that on?
Page twelve.
No, 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 no.
No, no, the south side.
Page twelve.
Yeah, but there's one of the south side.
Yeah, page twelve.
No, no, we put the north side, that's on the implementing the plan page, so that could be, the south side could be move, could, could be, um.
Oh, wait, that's the north, yeah. Yes.
On page twelve.
On tw- twelve, and then we can put something else on the implementing the plan page.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm sorry.
That sounds good.
Okay, so twelve is south side?
Photo twelve to page twelve.
Yes.
On twelve, we have the north side, but now we're switching it to south.
And, and. And we're gonna leave.
Now, twelve is gonna be the south side.
Leaving thirty-eight to north.
Yeah, thirty-eight's the north.
And we're.
And thirty-eight is going to remain the north side.
Correct.
So you're putting picture twelve on page twelve.
Correct.
Wow.
And then thirty-nine, forty, vision statement, isn't this the same?
Okay, so.
That, okay, so.
Keep going.
Page forty is the same, the vision statement is the same as the cover.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I like the vision statement for the vision statement, but I don't like it for the cover. I think for the vision statement, we should leave it.
I like the sunburst picture myself.
For the cover? Me, I was thinking that or the wagon wheel for the cover.
Oh, no, we talked about the cover doing a, we, where did we talk about doing the four seasons?
Um, no, second.
Picture, oh, right here, okay.
Uh, uh, yeah. So where's, where's the sunburst?
Okay.
Yeah, there's a thing where it's gonna be changing in the car.
It is number fifteen.
Oh.
I don't think we've used it.
Fifteen?
Picture number fifteen, yeah.
Where do we want that? For the vision statement one?
Oh, I don't know.
Or the cover?
I just like the picture.
I don't.
That's cuz this is black and white.
I like the vision statement for the planted field.
Did it ever come up here?
The vision.
No. I don't know if it's, is it a private page?
Oh, you know what, that, yeah.
No, it's not a private page.
It does, when you do that.
The shadow.
It's just there's.
But the black and white.
I mean, it's the full page picture, so.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know.
Is it on the vision statement page?
Bro, on the vision statement page, I think this is an original.
How about an autumn road? Or autumn tunnel, we use that?
We did.
Is this thirteen or fourteen? Have we used those anywhere?
We used this here.
Oh, yeah, we did.
But that's not the road, that's, that's like the trail.
The tunnel.
Try it, try it and, um.
I think that's what this is, yeah. Dot org.
Okay, let's get through the rest of these pictures. So for the vision statement, everybody, we wanna keep this one?
Love it.
What do you think? Love it?
Yeah, I like the picture, I just, it was the same as the cover, that's all I was saying.
Okay, vision statement stays. Agriculture, yeah, we're gonna change that, agricultural importance, goals and objectives, and we have.
The horses and the kitty, yeah.
So, so we're leaving, I'm sorry, we're leaving that and the.
Yeah.
Did you ride one of them?
No, we're changing the front.
Changing, we'll come back with, yeah, okay, got it.
And then page forty-two is valuing the environment.
Alright, and then. Forty-two?
We're on forty-two.
Forty-one is horses, check. And forty-two is the environment, it's the field, I think in the sky, I think that's the one called valuing the environment.
Yeah, the river's perfect.
Yeah.
That's, that's the one in the background is hollow road.
On thirty-three? Yeah.
That's your industrial, where the, where the industrial goes into the farm.
Oh, perfect.
That's just that.
And we value the environment, okay.
And then page forty-four is the tunnel of trees.
Definitely pretty, accessible transportation system.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And forty-six?
Forty-six is that pond, I love that pond.
I think it says land use, you know, we have a pond, and we have a fence, and we have a field and trees, we've coordinated land use going on right there.
So, moving on.
We're good with forty-six, we're keeping that too.
Forty-eight is PDR, so you've got farm animals.
Anybody have problems with that? Forty-eight, we have cows.
Okay.
The cows? Alright.
Forty-nine, residential area plans and a house.
Nice old house.
There you go.
And that's the ori- from the original.
Is that?
Yeah, that's.
That's the original house.
Um, fifty-two is, we're keeping that fences.
Fifty-two, we have fences, oh, and the cool driveway with the wagon wheels.
Yeah. That's good.
And then, these are our diagrams, they were already there on fifty-three.
And industrial areas plan, um, the picture of the pond guy building, but, Joe, you said you.
Yeah, I was just, the henshaw building is just really nice looking, it's a new updated building that show.
Yeah. So you wanna, did you say you could try and get some?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'll go, I'll go take a picture of that.
Okay.
So page fifty-four.
So either keep the pond guy on Joe is going to get henshaw pictures.
Yep.
And we'll see, but we'll leave the pond guy in there for now, placeholder.
Yep.
Implementing the plan, that's where we have the south side.
Implementing the plan, we have the south side. Do we have that right there?
Okay, so this is where we're gonna have a blank page between the map and the appendix.
Uh, uh.
That's my point.
Bro, well, first.
Fifty, I, I'm saying, um.
Yeah, it's like that.
The new page fifty-six is gonna be blank, do we wanna pi- put a picture there?
We're gonna say blank on purpose. Okay. Let's put a picture there.
Intentionally, this page intentionally left blank.
Well, let's put a picture from the pond, I know, that's what I have to write down there.
This is intentional.
We, we could have the, we could do the number nineteen, the snow flag.
But that's where we could, I know that blank page, that's where we can put the pictures that we don't use elsewhere.
Yeah.
Oh, a whole bunch of them, okay.
Yeah.
I like the snow flag, I nominate number nineteen. For page fifty-six.
And you guys are gonna kill me, but I'm still going back to that blank page.
Well, we just, they're saying, pay attention, we're gonna put pictures here.
Wait.
Nineteen and fifteen.
No, not pictures.
We're putting pictures.
So when you open page fifty-six and fifty-seven, you're gonna have both pages, left and right.
No.
No.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six has the south side, fifty-seven's gonna have nothing.
Okay. I know.
Yeah.
And then fifty-eight is gonna be implementation, fifty-nine is gonna be strategic action.
I understand that, my point is, when you open fifty-five, and then, fifty-five's gonna be on its own page, correct?
No.
Fifty-five is a map.
It's not changing, correct?
It's not changing, so fifty-four on the left, fifty-five on the right.
Right, right.
Okay, so when you turn the page, bear with me, hang on, say, when you open page fifty-five, you turn the page, why don't we have fifty-six with fifty-seven? And fifty-eight with fif- or fifty-nine with fifty-eight? So you can see the table, um, you don't have to flip pages.
You're, you're not gonna have to.
That's what we're doing, that's what we're doing, but we're moving it up, up a page.
That's what we're doing.
Remember, I showed you.
You're looking at.
Cause he's confused me here, he's saying it's even bright, you just said fifty-six is gonna left blank.
Okay. Yes.
The page numbers are gonna change, the page numbers are gonna change.
We're gonna.
Okay, just so we're clear, and I'm not trying to.
Yeah, yeah, but backside.
Yeah.
Basically, the backside of this map will be blank, so that the imple- implementing the plan will start, and then you flip it open, and you see the implementation key, implementation chart.
So basically, the fifty-six page is going to be fifty-seven.
That's. Mm-hmm.
Right, then you're gonna open it up to what is now fifty-seven will be fifty-eight, fifty-eight will be fifty-nine.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, exactly, that's how it's going to be.
So fifty-eight and fifty-nine are gonna be facing pages.
Right.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
So this is gonna be page sixty.
Because in the way you had stated that twice, that fifty-six was gonna stay blank.
So that's the plan.
We're gonna move it, I'm like, wait a minute, well.
No, we're just keeping the picture.
So now we're letting the fifty-six, so it'll not be blank, it'll be a photograph.
I trust you're ready here.
Right.
I got you.
That's what I say, I don't know if it's.
Photo collage, and then which pictures are photo collage?
Whichever ones are left over.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Cause there's some nice ones that'll be left over.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we're on page fifty-nine, and that is, no pictures. Are we done with the pictures? Now we have to go back to the very beginning, the very beginning is a very good place to start.
Why, we're done.
No, we have to go back to the very beginning and get a title page.
To decide what's gonna go on the cover. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
What, the cover page, yes.
It's gonna do.
I thought she was gonna start all over.
I was gonna say, can't we get us like this or something, sweet up on like the.
There you go.
Let's get on the township stage, hold the.
Yeah. Yeah.
Take a screenshot from the meeting video.
Don't give us too many ideas, I, I would know that.
This yard picture, I like that picture, I don't.
So do, do we have a, a winter, spring, summer and fall picture that we can use?
And on the page two or whatever?
Mm-hmm, the second page of the plan.
Yeah.
I think we do, um.
We have a winter photo.
What do you mean, the winter wagon wheel, twenty?
Um, no, for this, for the second page of the plan.
Well, we're.
The second page of the plan, I'm not sure what you mean, let's see.
So, so this page.
No, right here, the, I made a township twenty twenty-four master plan.
Oh, that page, okay.
So, because there's such a big blank area, we were talking about doing some of these pictures, or any pictures.
Space.
This one.
Okay.
Beth had suggested using the snow flag, but we could put four pictures of winter, spring, all those seasons.
A flag.
And.
Yes.
Depicting all those seasons.
Okay, the snow flag, and then the autumn tunnel, or, well, we use the autumn tunnel, so we could put the, uh, sunburst road.
It's fifteen, autumn road.
Autumn road.
Yes, it's on page I.
Number I. Oh, fifth I.
And, and I'm thinking the, the trail child could be the summer.
This one. Autumn spring, summer.
It's photo used, for number thirteen.
Or do you just do that on I-I?
Oh, and the child, yeah.
Or I-I.
Because that way.
I-I is intensely left blank.
Except for these pictures.
I don't have it written down, but.
Except for these pictures.
Well, we just, if we did put pictures there, we wouldn't, we'd take that.
We would have to take that off.
Well, just take that out, because that way it's like, okay, it shows you your four seasons, and then you can kinda get into it.
Either one of these may drive.
They should, we should put the cow pasture on I-I.
We have three photos.
That's a lot of ink.
This is the autumn, autumn tunnel was you, no.
Only so many copies printed.
We could do sunrise and sunset too.
That's not that.
Oh, yeah, those are good ones.
That is.
What about the trail snowman, I really like the trail snowman.
Yeah, but we already have snow already, the flag.
We have winter, yeah.
We could put that in community.
Or the wagon wheel we already have.
Community engagement.
That can go on page fifty-six.
Yeah, that's in your collage, I like it, and DJ Sunset Farm can be in your collage.
Yeah.
A road chat? Oh, yeah, that is a good transportation road chat.
Sunset?
So I don't need to go try and take another picture of the iron mic, we're good with that, or do you want me to? I don't think it shows that well, it's.
I thought you were.
I will, I don't have a problem.
Well, well, I'm gonna say, when I'm not taking pictures, I can do it too, I mean, I'm already gonna go tomorrow.
So maybe it's at thirty-four to page I, and that's the fourth photo.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Which one, the sunset?
Yeah, yeah, sunset thirty-four, page I, and the sunset thirty-seven, go on to fifty-six.
That's just on my way back to work, it'll be easy for me to grab.
Okay.
I was even looking at how like, I could do it to where the.
Okay.
Yeah, the child, the sunset.
Just to kinda move the.
The snow flag.
So like, try to get this as the back of it.
And the, and one of the.
Or even more, you know.
Yeah. Autumn tunnel.
For, for sure, I totally get it, yeah, just so you can actually read it, yeah.
Whichever one shows the best.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was really cold.
Well, then there's, yeah, like Joe said, there's also page I-I that has no pictures on it, it's intended left blank.
I think that's the backside of one, of page, so.
It's true, then it's in the list there.
Yeah, we can leave it. Instead of it being too many photos up, up first.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and the pond stuff is, see, I was thinking the, the pond actually being the cover photo, cause that.
The pond?
The pond, number one.
Which one?
Yeah, I always liked that pond too.
But they, but I believe they inserted it somewhere else.
I, yeah.
That's where it's, um, future planning, land use planning, and it seems like land use planning.
Yeah, yeah.
There it is, yeah.
Yeah.
I, for Armada.
It would depend on the quality if it could.
What about twenty-eight, Green Tall?
If it could be that thing, yeah.
We already did Green Tall, yeah.
Did we use it?
We did, we did Green Tall.
Which one, twenty-seven or twenty-eight?
We'll place that on number twelve, we talked about doing.
Well, I think, well, now, no, photo twelve is gonna go on page twelve.
Page twelve, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so Green Tall.
So that photo.
This is twenty-eight.
Yeah, so twenty-eight could go on the collage page.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The collage page, and twenty-nine, go on the collage page.
And twenty-seven.
What about this thirty, I made a fa- barn field for the, um. Cover page.
Do we have that on?
This is all without, without the road though.
Do we have that one? It's without the road, it's further away.
Oh.
It's thirty.
I think that cover should be.
And then it's.
Uh, transparent like it is.
Yeah.
Cause it gotta have a.
But with this one, you can kinda, cause I like the wagon wheel for that, but I don't know if it'll work.
I think on that page too, DJ, you should put the emblem. Actually, more in the background of the picture. Or.
Important decisions like this.
Is that too messy, you guys?
Which one?
The emblem.
The emblem, instead of here small, should we fade that in the back, or can you guys do that?
It just depends on the quality of the emblem, like if it all get pixelated when enlarged, I'm not sure.
Do you think it'll look? Too messy, or?
I think it'll look too messy.
You could try maybe enlarging it a little bit where, where, where it is.
Yeah. No, yeah, or just to cover that light area.
This would be a good cover.
Be smart. Please.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want too much, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the only thing I do like about, to me, the, the main image is, you don't want a lot going on, cause you don't wanna take away from the verbiage, like that's, you almost want, yeah.
Right.
Sky.
Right, that's why I just enlarge it here.
Yeah.
So page thirty-seven, if we could get that in the background, or picture thirty-seven?
Just do this, but this to me looks good.
Yeah, that's right.
Mm-hmm.
Picture forty-seven.
No, I could see that being bigger for sure, just make it, you know.
For, um. For the cover.
Oh, the sunset farm.
So it's a bigger seal.
Cause you're gonna, it's gonna have the words on top of it, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, we could.
Just so it's not the same picture as the vision page, so we'll see how that looks and how pixelated it is, all those factors.
Okay, so try that. Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Or the Armada, or, or picture, I said picture thirty, we could do thirty-two possibly.
Yeah, see, that's why. While I was talking about this page.
Yeah.
But it may not, well, first we'll do thirty-seven if it doesn't work, cause the pixelation or con- or conflict with the wording.
Right. But see here, Zee?
We'll do thirty-seven.
A lower register.
Go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
Or thirty-four.
Yeah, that one's a lower pixel.
You see here, how you did it on here?
Yeah.
How it looks more uniform?
Mm-hmm.
Than this one, this one looks kinda bland.
Oh, you want it up there.
So move it to the top.
Or, and make it the same proportion, like each.
Right corner.
Gold lettering too.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what page is that?
Okay, yeah, it does look better.
Do, does that make sense, you guys?
Well, no, that, what he's holding up there is the, um, the annual plan.
Oh, the A P P, yep.
You want it here, or you want it past down?
That's the, yeah, annuals report.
It's okay. So same as A P P.
Yeah, this way it looks smart.
Yeah, top corner, it looks like it's stamped.
What's the show that, it's important.
Yeah.
Yeah. A big part?
Where's that, um, picture in the annual report?
That's a good question.
And thanks, thanks to Beth.
Is that one of these?
It might not be, I mean, it looks like a farm.
Oh, it is probably a stock photo, yeah, cause that, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, on the page, front cover, we want.
Okay.
Yeah, we.
Yeah.
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 Oh, right there.
If you move the seal up into here, do you just make this text a little bit bigger to center and align it in the middle? Just so you're not, or do you leave that space over there and not worry about it? I guess, so you can make a judgment on.
Yeah, they probably make the text larger if that emblem's gone, yeah.
You know, just to kinda equal it.
The way this is going on an angle, it, it probably would shift.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, it, I just didn't know if it would look out of the big.
It might straighten it. Are you straightening it?
It looks the same with.
Yeah, yeah, it would be fine, if that seal was just moved up and bigger.
Yeah, yeah.
Did we end up putting the winter wagon wheel anywhere?
No. No.
That might be the cover, or thirty-seven.
Being the cover, but the problem is, it makes, be too much action, too much going on.
There's too much behind it.
Too much going on, it won't be look right.
Or did we put that in with the seasonal collage?
It would look good with the seasons, but then we said the snow flag.
Yeah, that's true.
So maybe the col- the fifty-six page?
Sure.
Yeah.
And just make it large.
Yep, no, we did the seasons on page I, right?
Yeah.
You, you did pick some. Yep.
Yeah, what, what we said was, um, nineteen. The snow flag, um. The sunset Suzie, number thirty-four, the trail child, number thirty-five.
Mm-hmm.
And, what was the fourth one?
Fifteen? Sunburst, or, uh.
Oh, what, one of the autumn tunnels.
Yeah.
On, um, either thirteen or fourteen, whichever one shows up better.
Of the, okay.
Are we, we are using thirty-five, trail trial?
Yeah, for it to show, or we could use, there's a lot of good winter pictures.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm still, I, you know, you can't see her face.
Who's Suzie?
A resident.
She's a resident, um, and she gave permission to use her pictures.
No, no, I didn't mean it that way.
I did not, I did not use any of the ones that she had her children facing the camera.
Correct.
But that one could be anybody's kid.
Sure, sure, she just signed off on it?
Yeah.
That's not what I'm saying.
Oh, what are you saying?
Uh, I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
It's a little too noisy background.
Yeah, maybe I don't.
No, I think, I, I don't know where you're going, but I, I'm just not a fan of children being in photos.
I'm not, that's.
That are published, yeah.
Well, it's not even that, that's not the issue.
For me, it is, so.
Gotcha. Anyway, sorry.
Maybe look, look to another photo, or.
No, I'm, I mean, it's up to the commission, I.
If we can entertain something, if you can, care.
It's just like a silhouette, it's not a whole cool photo.
It's a cool picture, that.
What?
The, the, the trail kid.
I think it's a great picture, but that's not the reason.
To go on the trail. That's, I know what you're saying.
Yes, that's not PC.
The history of.
The trail.
The trail, just in.
With the one, the, the April girl.
So.
I'm gonna say it.
Okay.
It to.
I wanted, out of respect for the family, you should say something to them.
Is that where that particular picture?
No, I don't know.
Yeah, we don't know.
You should run it by them.
I know where it's taken.
And see what they think.
Well, if it's not taken by that memorial, then that's not an issue in my mind, cause that trail goes all, I mean, there's miles of that trail.
I'm just saying, to be PC, I, I think you should be kind of courtesy towards them.
Oh, yeah, see, I.
Okay.
Yeah.
Pick up the reference.
Yeah, I didn't either.
All right, and, and, I don't know, people's.
I think it's, it's okay.
People can get upset about anything, though.
Yes, you know how they.
And it's a pretty picture, it's a great, it's a great place for families to go.
I think she would approve, and I knew it was a little, so.
What if we just put it in the collage page on fifty-six rather than the front page? Then it's, then it's in with a better collage, so we use this one for page fifty-six.
That's even really better.
And we use the sunset, the, the flag, the autumn tunnel, and. Maybe one of the.
We need a spring, but I don't know that we.
Oh, yeah.
What, what if we did the, the yard?
The yard, or was one of the Grange Hall pictures?
Oh, yeah, let's do one of the Grange Hall, cause we don't have like, it's all just nature otherwise.
Yeah.
How about the aerial, cause that was a nice one.
Yeah, that one was cool.
Oh.
That's a pretty one.
The aerial, we were already using on page twelve, we have to use, then use the.
Okay.
More views.
But, can, can you look at, at number twenty-seven, does that look like it could pull off spring?
Twenty-seven?
Picture number twenty-seven?
Oh, picture twenty?
No, it has red leaves.
It has leaves.
It has red leaves.
Maybe the.
What about the fairgrounds?
That would be a good one to have, cause we don't have a picture of the fairgrounds in here, right?
This yard looks.
Blow it up.
I know, that's.
And that's what I was thinking, was the yard is springy.
Yeah.
But I wasn't sure.
I could do a drone picture of it, the fairgrounds.
Yeah, where are the, is there a fairground photo?
Yeah, um, it's, um, number twenty-nine.
Oh, okay, right there, okay.
That's.
Okay.
Well, did we wanna do that, or did we wanna use the yard? Because that one, the, 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 the fairgrounds, does that fit for spring, or do we not really care doing the four?
Oh, Forts Even?
Could, could we say that the, um, the sunset is spring, I think that, that one's fall, or closer to, closer to fall.
I think the spring shot is the yard, it's probably the closest, it's the greenest.
The greenest?
Yeah.
Boom, yeah.
Or like the.
The little girl picture. The child is, but.
No, we didn't, we took that out.
I think we're taking that out.
Just mixing with the nature, but still.
There was really good in the bar.
Sure you're gonna be much better, the problem is the.
How, how about the, the close-up, um, Kraus Field?
Yeah.
And, and the spring, summer, fall, winter.
Baseball is spring.
That's true, baseball is spring.
Oh, that's beautiful, we don't want that.
Baseball's soccer, lacrosse. DJ?
Oh, wait, we, we talked about it for the cover, that'd be great for the cover.
That one, or the.
Yeah, we said.
Well, first, I guess we were gonna try the sunset farm.
I thought it was.
Well, we're gonna try the wagon wheel, but it doesn't seem like.
If, if the wagon, if.
Will you look at that?
Thirty-seven sunset farm works for the cover, then we could do the wagon wheel as one of the largest photos on page fifty-six. With the collage, and have that be the largest one, and then collage with other photos around it.
But we're still trying to figure out page I.
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 Yeah, you're looking for, for the season, doesn't have to be the season, so.
The, the, two or three.
Doesn't say seasons on it.
And then everything else, just go on fifty-six.
Yeah.
Or in the back, depending on.
Mm-hmm.
You, you're typing.
Okay.
So the cu- the cover photo, is that changing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, what are we, what are we saying, the primary uncover?
Is thirty-seven. On the cover, if the pixelation works, otherwise, we do wagon wheel. And try, see how that looks.
Sunset farm.
But I don't know how the sunset farm will come out, because there's gonna be in green overlay.
Yeah, and the wagon wheel too.
Yeah, so we could do the.
The wagon wheel would, wouldn't, you wouldn't see the snow if you did a gre- green overlay on that, so. I, I think the sunset farm is probably the more likely.
You do the cow pasture, picture seventeen.
I like the wagon wheel too.
Mm-hmm, or the yard.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I like the one that's on there too, if you did do the sunset, it would work, it would actually work well, if you had the, the letter, the, the wording. At the very bottom left corner, so that you saw the peaks of the, the grain setup, and then. You know, like you could see the sunset, you know, like you just, if you put the lettering directly over the peaks of the grain bins and whatnot, it's gonna just get very messy or busy. Or you put the township, you know, the Armita Township twenty twenty-four master plan in the upper left-hand corner. So that you could see that silhouette of the barn, you know, of the grain setup and whatnot. It ju- it, just where it is right now, it would just be messy directly over it, you know.
Moving this up into the sky, basically.
Mm-hmm.
It would either be, yeah, it would either need to be at the top or the bottom.
Or all the way at the bottom left.
Okay.
Or maybe cut it off, cut it off, something.
So we'll leave this as an option, we'll let them.
Yeah, it actually might be cut out, cause of the, on the angle banner, the way the banner is on here, it may actually cut off that bottom and kinda make it. Fit, flow with everything, depending on how it's put on there.
Cory, can you turn that? Yeah, that looks a lot better than.
Yeah, yeah, the silhouette of the, the grain bins is cool.
What about zooming in on it more?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
We'll have to do that.
The graphics person's got the.
Yeah, exactly, they're gonna be able to get it to where it's cropped in more.
Propped it up.
Yep.
Anyway, thank you.
Thanks.
So, the, the green wording of the vision statement on the front cover, does that look right to everybody?
Uh.
Uh, if, I think it would look better if you made the color of like, what, how the corn is, like the dark green. Instead of it, like the light green that, where McComb County, Michigan, how it has a really good contrast. The, the same light green is used in that vision statement, but if we did a dark green font, it would blend, it would stand out more and be a bit easier to read.
Darker, lighter.
For the.
This would, this needs to be darker, this green should match this dark green.
Okay, but not the McComb County.
No, this, no, no, no.
That's what I thought he's.
No.
He's the McComb County dark green, but maybe.
Right, I'm saying, it's the same right now, this should be dark, that should stay light because of the contrast.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
I just think it'll be easier to read.
And now.
Is that all the pictures?
Yeah.
Now we need to decide whether we put it out for, um.
Recommend to the township board?
We wanna look at it one more time.
We wanna look at it first.
I have one more question.
No, I mean, we can still make revisions.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we just need to get the process moving.
Okay.
Get it out for public review.
Okay, so we get it out to the board.
Yeah.
Yeah, approval, right.
So we need a motion to.
Yes.
Well, hang on a minute, he's got one more.
Well, I see we've got the new future land use map with the, um, preliminary sewer district. And I don't remember the page number, when you referred to that, that, um, language had changed to. Inflect that this is now on this map, rather than referring to the Blue Max Sewer District map.
Forty-three?
No, oh, if his language in there, it says it was.
His language refers to a map that we don't have.
Right, okay.
What page, Deacon?
We're suggesting forty-three possibly?
No, it wasn't forty, forty-three.
Yeah.
We do a quick dive here.
Right, forties are over here.
Industrial areas.
Refer to the.
A reference to a map, we'll make sure it exists.
It's page forty-nine.
No, forty-six, right here.
Okay.
Um, it says, um. The township's preliminary sewer district is shown on the preliminary sewer district map, and we don't have one of those anymore.
Okay.
It should reflect that it's shown on the future.
On the future land use map.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
It's a page forty-six.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
All right, so, we need a motion to send this to the township board for approval pending, um.
Amendment.
The amendment changes that we've worked with Regina on.
Are you making that motion?
I'll make that motion, what did I say?
Sarah made a motion to.
To.
Recommend this, the master plan to the board, to the township board, pending.
For, um, public review.
Public review.
For approval for public review.
With the noted amendments, or whatever.
Should go to the board.
So, the, Sarah made a motion to ascend.
I can't even.
I can't read that.
Motion to recommend to send to the township board for public review with the amendments noted.
I'll second that motion.
Beth seconded the motion?
Thanks for seconding that.
Any discussion on the motion?
And I just wanna clarify that, let's, if this does get approved to move forward to the board, the board says yes, as long as these amendments are done. We can still make any changes.
And stuff.
So, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
My question is. Been sent out, you can make changes, like pictures or.
Yep.
Typos.
Yeah, we just have to track it.
Format.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be included in a summary on comments or changes made during the public review period, which will be state of the plan.
So my question on the motion is, if, this, this goes to the board next, and then they review it, and then they send it off for distribution to everybody?
Yes.
For sixty-three days?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's go, it goes to the board, the board, will they look at it, in a week or a month after?
I'm gonna assume the month after, only because the meeting is next week.
Right, that's about fast.
And, um, I don't know if we, there's.
We wouldn't be able to get to recommend the changes in.
Right.
So the board will probably see it next month.